All right, good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. This is the 31st of January and I thought we might just briefly start by introducing ourselves and I'm pleased that Ralph Herbst is here, who's the chairman of the Planning Board. Maybe we can start with the Planning Board's introductions and then go to the ZDA.
Sure.
Okay. Bob Leary, Planning Board.
Ralph Herbst, Planning Board.
Jim Fox, Planning Board.
Doug Brown, Planning Board.
Matt McNamara, Zoning Board.
Kat Kerfoot, Planning Board.
David Hadad, Zoning Board.
Trisha Bell, Zoning Board.
Scott Zelinski, ZDA.
I also just wanted to recognize that David Brago, who is our liaison to the Board of Selectment, is also here and I always thank David because he's been spending more time with us, I think, than he does with the Board of Selectmen. Thank you for that. And Patty Johnson, who is also a member of the ZDA, has just come in. I know that Ken Foreman won't be able to be with us this evening, so we'll do that. One other plug while I have Frank with us from FCTV is that Board of Appeals is still down an associate member and so we're looking for folks that might be willing to take out an application with a voice selection or appointment. This evening, we've only got two items on the agenda and I say only, it doesn't mean that it's there any less important, there are no hearings, but Brian Currie has been willing to share with us a training module for the roles and responsibilities of Planning Board and zoning boards and I've seen some of his presentations before, they're extremely valuable, so I know that we can learn a lot from it. And after that, we just wanted, as a zoning board, to share with the Planning Board some of the initiatives between the Board of Selectmen and the zoning board regarding a review of the zoning bylaws. So with that, Brian, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does everyone have a copy of the handout now that everyone is here? Need extra copies, you do? You can have one. Pass those out now that the board members are here. So tonight, we have a little bit of a training module for you. It's part of the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. I just want to explain who they are and what they do and what I do for them, so you have a better understanding of what tonight's all about. The Citizen Planner Training Collaborative is made up of the University of Massachusetts at Amherst, the American Planning Association, the Massachusetts Chapter, my board of directors, the Association of Regional Planning Agencies in the Commonwealth, and the Department of Housing and Community Development. These agencies have put together these training modules since about the mid-'90s and it flowed out of a lot of Don Schmitz Land Use Managers from the '70s, '80s and '90s. So we've been doing this together and we used to be doing it with the old Massachusetts Federation of Appeals, Planning Appeals Boards, but that was in existence up until the '90s. So we've been doing this for about, you know, 18 years now and I've been working with these folks typically in introductory level courses, there are 16 of them, eight core courses, two others. And they teach things like site plan review, special permits and variances. Last time I was here with the Historic District Commission, Zoning Board and Planning Board, we went over how to hold a public hearing. Remember that module from San Francisco? I thought it was quite hilarious. This year, the collaborative, I taught Introduction to the Zoning Act. I taught them for the southeast region of the planning district. So because we volunteer our time as professionals, I do this pro bono for the Commonwealth, they allow us to use this gratis. Otherwise, it's $30 per person, please, made out to the University of Massachusetts at Amherst. So it's a great benefit that we have this from them and I'm going to thank, I have to thank them, our sponsors tonight, and to recognize their contributions. I haven't changed any of it. This is a training program that's developed to use throughout the Commonwealth, from the Berkshires here to Kidcot. I'm going to give it to you without any Brian Currie edits. Typically, I do that on Kidcot because we have some special legislation. This is what you get. Tonight, unblemished, no, no Brian Curries. I'm into it.
Brian, as we discussed, we're going to keep this real informal so that if, you know, we don't go through the chairmans or anything like that and Brian did indicate that we could interrupt him along the way if there were questions.
Please, any questions you have along the way, just ask them and we'll do our best to get you an answer. There are no silly questions, only my very silly answers. So let's see, we can get started and a little bit about, I guess, I'm pleased to tell you about me, but you know who I am. One of the reasons they chose me to do these trainings throughout the Commonwealth is I've been here for 23 years, so I was your town planner. And prior to that, for six years, I was a city planner for the state. When prior to that, I was a regional planner for the county of Worcester County. Been doing it for a while, so I guess, city foolish, you think I know what I'm talking about. We'll find out tonight. So just, we'll start off with a little overview and then we'll get into some of the nitty-gritties. Again, I want to make sure everyone understands, this is a Level 1 course, introductory course. Some members might find it rudimentary, but you'd be amazed sometimes what you can learn even if you've been on the board for a long time. I remember my friend Janet Hand always saying things like, "Well, we've always done it that way, Brian." Gosh, I learned something tonight from this. So just so you know, Massachusetts is a home rule state. We've heard that probably lots of times. That means most of our decisions are made at the local level. We'll talk a little bit about what home rule means. There are federal and state exemptions. We'll talk about that a little bit tonight. Examples are Board of Health and Building Code regulations. It has our district agents who enforce those state-level regulations. Noise ordinances from DEP are federal law. The state ministers, they preempt us. We'll talk a lot about Chapter 48 tonight, the Zoning Act. It is not an enabling statute. We'll talk about what the differences are between an enabling statute, subdivision control law, Planning Board, and zoning board is an enabling statute. It's different than the Zoning Act. The Zoning Act used to be enabling. Now it's a home rule amendment, Article 89, door amendment, general statute. We'll talk about that a little bit and why that's important. There are many other laws and regulations besides zoning and subdivisions that are changing to our discussions tonight, but good zoning and planning board members typically have at least an idea of what they're all about. So what we're going to cover tonight, we're going to cover what the roles of planning and zoning boards are. We're going to talk about administration, what your duties and some management issues. Lots of planning boards and zoning boards have to manage budgets and do things throughout the Commonwealth. Small towns, that's a little different, but we'll talk about that. We'll touch on public hearings and voting. We actually have training modules about public hearings, which are much more advanced discussions about that and voting quanta. We'll touch on zoning. Again, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative has a training module that goes into depth about the Zoning Act, planning, planning law, the approved methods of municipal planning that were first adopted in the '50s, haven't changed much, we'll touch about that a little bit. Subdivisions and other planning topics. It's a Level 1, a Part 1 course. We will not talk about open meeting law, public records law, conflict of interest law, sources of other support tonight because we just don't have enough time. And we'll cover those later on in the types of training modules that we have for you. So here we are, you're a brand-new board member. What are the keys to being an effective board member? Key words here, let's point out, you know, it's the authority of the board. What authorities does it have in relation to its duties? How does it operate or how should it operate? Standards. All boards have standards for what you make decision-making. They're usually given to you either by town meeting or our friends at the state or federal government. Some legalities of how you conduct yourselves. I went out and talked to the abutters the other day and got some information. You know how that rolls. I know how that goes. Effective board members know, you know your regulations, you know your laws, you know your plans that are applicable to you. You don't have to be an expert. We'll talk about teamwork tonight. Lots of people think, "All of a sudden, I'm on a board and I have to be an expert." Don't try to be an expert in everything because it's a thankless task. You're a team. Boards don't act alone. Your clerk does your filing and your posting. Your building inspector does your zoning enforcement. Your planner, most towns, you get some staff support. In this town, you have to go send your board. Your conservation commission is out there, conservation commissions typically take care of what was protection. Your boards of health do Title V, that's the sanitary code of the state. They have a very important role in subdivision control. A board of health can actually preempt a subdivision on health reasons. A planning board, because it's an enabling statute, actually has no discretion if a board of health says no under particular circumstances under the subdivision control law. Zoning boards should know that under B applications. We have historic commissions in districts that take care of some of the architectural things that happen here in town. You don't have to worry about some of those things. Our community is fortunate, we have a nice legal department. Others, you should go out and vendor out a couple of net pages of the world or other small firms. You have your select boards, your mayors, your city managers, your finance committees, your engineers and other staff members. Quite a team when you think about it and it can work very well together if everybody knows their roles and responsibilities.
Brian, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Something you passed a little while ago. You said, you mentioned something about you were out at the site and you talked to some of abutters. I don't know how that goes.
It's a joke.
And I just, you know, you just touched on it, but I mean, I went to look at the one site review and there was a neighbor that happened to come out and offer some input, having recognized me. Am I not supposed to talk to them?
We were at the public hearing training module, we talked about these ex parte communications, discussing things outside of the public hearing room. You have to go in, in the town of Utopia, you go in there, a blank slate, tabula casae, and get all your information at the hearing, discuss it as a board and render a decision. If you're out on the site and a very well-intentioned neighbor comes over to you and says, "I have some really important things I want to talk to you about," one of the roles and responsibilities of a board is you act as a board. You don't act as individual board members. So the thing to tell that concerned neighbor is, "Come to the meeting and speak to the board." And that way, you hear it all together, at the same time, you're hearing the same thing because, you know, I talked to him, we talked to her and talked to him. By the time it gets three or four people down the road, usually it's ineffective. But take-home messages, you act as a board. And when someone comes to you in good faith, it's always in good faith, I got to tell you about my neighbors, he's, you know. Come see the board. At a public meeting, open meeting law, everyone hears it. Happens all the time to new board members. You give you a pass, you give a few passes, but it can implicate your decision. You can get thrown out, you know, good lawyers, as you know, toss it out on procedural defects or, and that can be a procedural issue.
Okay, thanks. Same thing for a phone call, right, Brian?
You shouldn't take serial phone calls. You might think this constituent is just calling you, eventually he calls Jim, he calls Pat, he calls Trish. All of a sudden, you're gathering the information outside the realm of a public hearing or outside the scope of the open meeting. It's called a serial phone call, never anything.
And just redirect them to our staff, we're fortunate to have.
Redirect to someone on your team. Oh, it's an enforcement issue, see the building commission. Oh, it's a weapons issue, see the conservation commission. It's a health issue. There's a team out there that you, you don't have to say, "I can't talk to you," because the town planner is going to get upset. You have a team of folks you can refer them to. It's perfectly legitimate and I give them responsibility to do this. So we never litigate in this town, we cooperate. So I was going to bypass this slide, but actually, it's some very important information and something you'll be proud of is that we have some all-board meetings. Here we are tonight. We do this a lot. I think it's very constructive, a lot of towns, I think Professor Probowski says it well in his book, typically arranges, inter-board relationships usually range from suspicion to outright hostility. In this town, we're very lucky to have joint meetings with the planning board, the Selectmen, zoning board, the health, we tend to cooperate. We have had joint reviews and hearings with the district's commission. We share our databases, we share our permit tracking, we share our circulation lists. We know the process manual, but we try to share those types of things. But the last bullet points, I think are the most important bullet points that are given to any board in any town, is that we understand each other's responsibilities. We did that with the board of health, planning board. We don't write regulations on health regulations. Board of health, you don't write zoning bylaws. And right up front, when we were discussing the turbine issues, we had those jurisdictional boundaries, we understood those boundaries, the result was good. If you cross those boundaries, you get those conflicts and sometimes poor results. And we share staff. We talk to each other. We go to your meetings, I've been to zoning board meetings, I've been to board health meetings, I've been to conservation commission meetings, we've been around the block, and we try to do those things. Very important. You would be stunned sometimes at other towns who don't do that, what we think is pretty basic here. And I emphasize that. So with that background, a little bit of overview and background, we'll just get into some of the fundamentals of what planning and zoning boards do. And even though you might get into subdivision control law, zoning board members remember that you are the planning board on account of, you understand the enabling statute that the subdivision control law is as opposed to the zoning act, which is a home rule amendment So planning boards, you can have five, seven or nine members. The original Falmouth planning board back in the '40s was 12. Was nine members, I was first town planning here back in 1989. Started, brought it down to seven, went back to nine, back to seven, and then seven for quite some time elected. You're three-year interns. You're elected. There can be associate members on planning boards, zoning boards. We went to town meeting once here in town, they decided because you are an elected board, you don't have associate members. Typically, associate members are with appointed planning boards. Well, half and half in the Commonwealth, half are elected, half are appointed for planning Again, we don't have to talk about associates because we don't have them here. Zoning boards was three for a long time, now you are five. You are typically appointed. There are some of both cities out there that actually have an elected zoning board. I think it's one or two. I think it's supposed to be one of those Berkshire towns. You do have associate members on this thing? And then you act in case of absence, inability to act, conflict of vacancies. Usually, a three-member board, you really need to have associate members. Five-member boards, it's better, but three-member boards, you do have to have associate members. Planning boards, your powers, your powers and duties. Obviously, a planning board prepares a comprehensive master plan under the state law. You're on Kidcot, you also act under the Kidcot Commission Act. You propose, review and hold hearings and make recommendations on zoning bylaws in front of town meeting, you know, that's one of your most important duties to have here. You always go first at town meeting. There are some towns that allow the finance committee to go first, state law says. You always make the motion or you make the recommendation first. Planning boards, review, you have to keep the door open.
It has to be open.
What's your message, Brian?
Review and act on subdivisions. Subdivisions are those preliminary plans and definitive plans. A preliminary plan is just that, it's not recordable, it's not appealable, it can be drawn on tracing paper and pencil, it's to flesh out some issues before you get to a definitive stage. Planning board members on the boards that did, probably haven't seen it, but it's literally a preliminary before we get into this and the nitty-gritties you see at the end. I always tell applicants, especially in more complex ones, you're better off submitting a preliminary plan to the planning board. You review and endorse plans, approval not required. We are the only state in this great nation that has an approval not required process for subdivisions. It was adopted in 1953 as a ministerial act, so registrars over there in the county will know that access to lots in that subdivision are relatively assured and it has spawned millions of litigation that seems to have calmed down here by the 2000s, but in the '80s and '90s, it was just a rodeo. We'll talk about A&R plans under another, under the module, it could go on all night. Planning boards may also be a special permit granting authority. Up until 1975, only zoning boards. Chapter 808 back in 1975, modified the Zoning Act, with no re-enabling statute, Chapter 49 statute now. Up until that time, only zoning boards acted on permits and that was the genesis of the site planning process because it's only like planning boards to be given to the act. But today, planning boards can be a special permit granting authority together with zoning boards, boards of selectmen, but not boards of health. You also, planning board, act on site plan reviews. Site plan review is different than site plan approvals as part of a special permit. We'll talk about that a little bit next week. And I hope to get you that training module, the differences between variances and special permits and what they are. Site planner reviews are not special permits and site planner reviews are not approvals. Before we get to talk about that a little later.
Brian?
Yeah?
I know that our board, in the time I've been on it, has rejected, I believe, two A&R plans because the impression is that there is no reason that you can, that they're an approval not required and they get it. I don't recall the circumstances, but I know, are there specific circumstances that they can be rejected on?
Yes. Short answer is yes. The long answer is it depends on whether it's a public way or a private way. And there are two tests. There's one, there's the vital access test. It's the adequacy of the way that gets access to the lot. And there's the adequacy of the access from that, from that way to the buildable portion of the lot. So let's just say you're on a public way, it's a paper street, the access implied by the frontage is illusory in fact, according to the Supreme Court, then it's not entitled to your endorsement. Let's say the road is a private way like Timbuktu cartway. Oh, no, let's not use that. Let's use another one. Let's use a dirt road out in the middle of nowhere. It's up to the planning board to determine whether the plan depicts a subdivision. As a zoning board, it's a comprehensive plan. It's up to that board to determine whether or not the access implied by the frontage to the buildable portion of the lot is actually good. The example I'll give you is the subdivision off of Palmer Avenue and West Falmouth Highway as you come into town with the Louborrow coming down on the right, there's a little subdivision down there. The frontage for those lots is actually on Old Palmer Avenue. Back in the '80s, before we litigated all this jazz, they had frontage on a public way. And the planning board at that time endorsed a plan approval not required because it met the legal definition. But today, you can look at sort of topographic features, so is the access implied by the frontage illusory in fact? Yes. The fire truck can't drive off a cliff. But it has to be something, really something like that. It can't be that the access could be better. The access, if the access is adequate, the planning board must endorse the plan. Must endorse the plan because the subdivision control law says you must, because it's an enabling statute. You must do what it tells you. You must endorse the plan if, in your opinion, the planning board, zoning board's opinion, access is reasonable. Very rare.
I have one more question about that.
Yeah?
We had a vote on A&R recently where we didn't, I didn't really feel like I wanted to vote for it.
Okay.
But I felt compelled to vote for it. Is it my personal choice or do I have to really say if it fits, I have to endorse it?
Your duty and responsibility is not what you, your duty and responsibility is what's in the general statute and the local body. So the general statute says, a planning board must endorse a plan if in fact the frontage or it doesn't meet the legal definition of a subdivision, you must endorse it.
Right.
Even though personally, I might think that is the worst plan on God's green earth, I'm going to make the recommendation to the board that, under the law, because we don't have any implied powers here, our powers, duties and responsibilities are given to us by others.
So if it fits, you must.
If it meets the definition, like it or not, you are the referees or the jurors. And there's people out there who are the prosecutors and defenders. You are not, you are the folks making decisions on property rights, the lawyers and those who will notice and adjudicate. You're deciding property rights. And you can't, even though it's the most difficult thing in the world to bring in, Sister Claire said I shouldn't put this stuff up there, Brother Patrick said, you know, the bylaw says this, general statute says that, of course, had this guidelines and interpretations, that's what, that's duties and responsibilities. Boards of appeals. Planning board members, pay attention, please. Boards of appeals are the permit granting authority, which is different than the special permit granting authority. The permit granting authority acts for other variances. The permit granting authority acts under findings under Section 648, which is Article 243. There are actually some towns that make findings without the special permit process, it's just the permit granting. This town uses the special permit process under Article 243. It's not universal. You hear and decide appeals on Section 8 and all of those, the building commissioner of appeals. You hear and decide applications for special permits, you hear an SPGA. You hear and decide petitions for variances, as I said, under Section 10. Variances are all about equal protection. And the module that we have for the training, the special permission variances, gets into that a lot, but the reason we have variances is all about equal protection. You can't apply a law in every certain, every single circumstance, circumstance, an instance there. There might be contingencies out there owing to soils or conditions that you will deprive a property of equal protection unless there is some way to vary the bylaw in the town of Utopia. The South Carolina Coastal Commission found that out, a very important case back in the '80s, Takings case in the Supreme Court, Lucas versus South Carolina Coastal Commission. They didn't have a variance procedure. Supreme Court found the Takings issue because there was no relief back to the South Carolina Legislature. Long story short, you have to have variances within a free protection court.
I have a question, I want to answer. Is it, is a variance, is that the decision that requires everyone to vote in favor?
It depends on the quantity of vote of your board. If you have a five-member board or a three-member board, variances are only issued by the board of use. Those aren't waivers under subdivision control. You need a unanimous vote of a three-member board, I believe you need a four out of five or five out of five. But you have a certain super quantity of vote for variance. You know, is that being unanimous of three and four out of five, I believe it's five out of seven.
Isn't there, isn't there some, something that the zoning board of appeals is required to have unanimous vote on?
Four out of five for everything except a comprehensive permit, which is only three.
Depends on your board, the constitution of your board. If it's only three members, you would need all three. But this is a five-member board, so you would need a...
Why would you need all three if you have two out of three, that's more than two thirds?
Because the state statute says you need three for a small board.
A quorum is four, though, so that we would have a unanimous vote and take action because you'd still need four out of five votes.
So when you used to be three, you needed a unanimous decision?
Exactly.
Okay.
You make findings, it's called a finding, under 48, Section 6, for non-conforming uses of structures. It could either be pursuant as a permanent granting authority or as a special permit granting authority. In our town, you're a special permit granting authority. Zoning boards hear petitions for comprehensive permits, that's the anti-snow zoning act of 69. You make recommendations to other SPGAs, such as the planning board, on special permits. And lo and behold, zoning boards, you may serve, in fact, you're supposed to be serving on master plan committees under the state statute because no plan is as good as those who are going to implement. who are going to input. I think we've been pretty good about that.
Batty Johnson.
But it said may, it said may.
It's a may, but I think it should be a she. That's a Brian Currie thing. Boards have rules and regulations.
Okay.
Boards of appeals, you adopt your regulations under the zoning ordinance or bylaw. Planning board, believe me, has a special permit granting authority. You actually adopt rules and regulations too. You have them. It's usually more for the forms and applications and procedures and final fees and whatnot.
Just as an F Y I, our procedural rules as a regular forty-eight applications and also forty-eight B applications are posted in the town code. I think we're section three-ten.
And we're, as a juror, it's a have to be a file with the town clerk, and we've done that under zone. Planning board also must have rules under master law, chapter forty-one, as the subdivision control law, A one Q. It requires you to adopt rules and regulations. It requires you to record them to town clerk. It requires you to record them with the land court recorder and requires you to record them at the registry of deeds. And you must, we'll get into a little bit of the rules and regulations, but the reason you do that is because your rules and regulations under the subdivision control law govern everything you do. Because subdivision control law, this was an enabling statutes that it's by the book and by the letters. And applicants have to know exactly what they need to do to gain your approval, and that's why they're recorded with the courts, registry of deeds and town clerk. And obviously, section nine requires you to adopt your rules and regulations for special permits. Planning boards have done that. Be amazed at the number of boards throughout the Commonwealth. Some of the things we do, some of the things you do, organization is gaining procedures. We have, the planning board has a, Ralph and others worked on this about ten years ago, about standard procedures and policies. I think the board of appeals has the same, on the role of your chair, your meeting schedule appointments. Not so much in writing your decision or your site plan procedures, that's typically governing other places. Our by, our zoning bylaw actually has in the bylaw a lot of site plan review procedures. We talk about liaisons with other boards and staff, recording of our meetings. Our table cut T V policies, which we are always agreeable to, we work them out with our friend Frank here. Your fee schedules typically for site plans and special permits and other issues that come before the board. Obviously, both boards hold public hearings. Again, we're just going to scratch the surface here. We actually had a whole training session on public hearings, but we'll move some of the fundamentals today. As you remember, some of we're here for the training module, it all begins with the application. If your, if your application is clear, you have a clear purpose of why we're here, what are we talking about? It's all starts there with your public hearing. You have a legal notice. State statute sets the minimum, sometimes go much further than that. We're going to talk about, it has to be a convenient time and location. We're going to have a meeting of committee X, Y, Z at eight o'clock on Monday morning. Isn't really a convenient time for the public because it's a public hearing, a public meeting to, to have such an important meeting. And it has been shown over time that sometimes your decisions are reversed or thrown out because you really didn't have a convenient time and place for the public to make opine on what it is you're deciding. The time and location is the public's convenience, not the board's. Should it be clear in your agenda where it's going to happen, your stated, your stated processes? We have that on our, on our agenda, the process the chairman will read. We have that on your agenda. I know the zoning board does the same. Obviously, the chairperson guides the hearings. You have to make it, but even have, there are boards out there that don't share information. You have to share it with everybody. Everyone has it. And then you have to allow for adequate time. We're only going to have a hearing for forty-five minutes. This hearing will start at seven, it will end at seven forty-five. Hearing will start at seven. And we'll conclude when the public has had a chance to opine and a permanent record of your actions can be taken. You would be amazed that those who say, we're going to hold three minutes each for forty-five minutes, all be good. A lot of this obviously is helped, is done by your stamp, we'll go over it. Notices of publicity, it has to be properly posted, it has to get out there. The location and functionality of the room, that's going to have a hearing on a very important topic, because it's a very small room. It's happened in the past. You're going to have to go to a bigger room or continue your hearing. The format of the hearing itself is important, you know, one speaks in favor, one speaks opposed, or it could just be ones for wide open hearings. I'm always in favor of just calling the next person because sometimes when you line up, who is it for or against, it's sometimes a chilling effect when those who might want to stand up. So I'm really against this, but I want to stand in line for ten minutes, wait until they set. Again, you have to make all the public information available prior to the hearing. I want to have it there if necessary. Have a very clear hearing procedure. The chairman runs the show. I'm going to call on you, I'm going to call on you. Want something new? We've heard that for the fifteenth time, yes, we know we don't like this, but this is somebody else. You've spoken five times, Mr. L. We're going to let Mr. R. You always have to have an option for a continuance. You just can't say this is over. If someone asks for a continuance, they give you a good reason, continue the hearing. And take the time in making and recording your decisions. Don't rush anything. Well, we got, we got to get to the next thing on the agenda, don't worry about the agenda.
Brian, excuse me. Matt, we publish the procedure on our agenda and so, and offer that to people in the public before the meeting starts. Do you do that?
Yes, we do. I think similarly, we post things online. We get picked up in the newspaper and of course, our hearings are published, you know, twice in advance.
Yeah. I mean, but the procedure that you follow during the meeting, during the hearing, we publish that so that people sitting in the audience know how it's going to go.
It's on your agenda that you hand out that night?
Yes.
We don't do that. We have it on our website and I review it at the beginning of the meeting and sometimes at the beginning of a particular hearing, people have come in and it's a noteworthy hearing.
You tell them how it's going to go?
Yeah.
I see, okay.
Some people are visual, some are, either way works. Sometimes it depends on just, on the hearing itself. What are the boards' relationship to planning staff? And this is just particularly planning staff for planning boards. Some boards do, in certain instances, some towns, uptown planner staffs, it's on a difference. In fact, that happens in a lot of towns at this time. Sometimes we administer land use regulations for you. Not this town, we've always come back to the board. Obviously, you know, we prepare your staff reports. We research your planning and land use issues from taxes to turbines. We work on long-range plans such as a comp plan or special projects such as Springbys Road. We typically advise, planning staff should tell you what to do. If you're a town planner, it's telling you what to do, tell the town planner or the planning staff. Your roles to advise us. I don't, I don't vote. You notice I typically do that for you. I always tell you, I don't answer questions. I might seem like a hesitant. I don't vote. I advise. We review and coordinate review applications typically at the planning level. I'm supposed to know and interpret certain laws and bylaws and ordinances as has been tutored to me by competent legal professionals on the basis. We always meet with the developer first on property owners and citizens. We do that not because we like to be first in line, we do that to protect your interest in public hearings. We do that because boards act as boards, your rules, your responsibilities are a collegial body. I want to call Ralph first, chairman of the planning board, and let him know what I think on that issue. Tell me first. It's not Ralph or Jim or Matt, it's the board. We maintain your records. We try to provide a little continuity. We try to assist the public and we try to be your advocate and voice here in town hall when it comes to the planning board and other boards we serve. In this town, we serve many boards. Frankly, I serve any board that the town manager tells me to serve. I'm glad they do so and I love that. Some towns are a little more Ducci-like in that, you know, this, they don't cross-discuss or pollinate and you would be amazed how well, sometimes you'd be, you can always criticize yourselves, but you'd be amazed at how well some towns take it, compare it to us. Go with. In many towns in the Commonwealth, the boards act as supervisors to staff. In the town of Norwell or some smaller towns, this town's charter is different, but in many towns, you actually have the boards regulating staff. When I first came here, the planning board hired me. They give me permission to go on vacation, they sign my payroll forms, which was before the town's charter. This charter, this town delegates all those responsibilities to my town manager. But in many towns, I have to tell them that, you know, you may hire your planner consultants and typically the professional staff and volunteer board relationships, you have to really set that. In this town, you don't have to really worry about that. But you should know, just in case you move and serve on another board in the town, that in fact, you have certain personnel responsibilities, these are the types of things you should be thinking about. We must spend a lot of time on that because we have our competent manager staff here that keeps me alive. Voting considerations. It goes to the fundamental questions that Doug asks, you know. It has to take place at meetings. No call-ins, no emails, no faxes, et cetera. I realize this, again, this is the town of Utopia graduate school you're going to get in a, the best thing you can do when you get the phone calls, the emails and the faxes is to state that technically, you know, we have to support, here's someone you can talk to, here's what you can't. You can go talk to Brian Currie or you can go talk to Aladio Gold or you can go talk to Dave Carr and get some information from them, then come back and see. Quorum, you have to have the number of board members required to meet and make a decision. That's very important. Four is a quorum for the planning board, three is a quorum for the board of appeals, but there are other...
Actually, our quorum is four.
Is your quorum four? I'm sorry, your, your, okay. The general rule is the majority of board may act, but as you know, special permits, it's all different, variances can be different depending on what's going on. Abstentions count towards quorum. You can sit there and say, present, you don't have to vote. And again, special permits, you require a two-thirds vote. Certain other decisions require a majority vote. We have just found out, planning board, that it requires a majority vote on an approval not required endorsement. I have always been of the opinion that it's just a majority of those present voting. So the appeals court disagrees with me. You now need a majority of the board to vote on an approval not required. So you have to have four members, you have to have four voted in affirmative from now They're always checked in.
What do you suppose would have happened if there was an A and R that did point five and two people, for whatever reason, chose not to, and we were in that situation?
It would be a constructive grant. Automatically approved in twenty-seven days, right? Twenty-one days goes by, it goes by grant. Most folks don't want that. They would like this, get a signature instead of a clerk certificate, but that's the case, that's the case. And there is another relatively infrequent vote of the planning board, repetitive petitions, that's section sixteen of the zoning act. If, in fact, a petition on the city front of board of appeals comes back, it's substantially the same form, it's called a repetitive petition. You've got to go to the planning board first. If all but one member of the zoning board, of the planning board has voted in affirmative, it will allow to go back to the zoning board with the majority. Fairly rare, but this planning board has had to exercise those duties in the past. We try not to have repetitive petitions. That means the exact same petition comes in within two years. There's a two-year bar, just like a zoning bylaw, a petition in front of town. And just so you don't go back in front of the zoning board in cases you're aware of. It's only happening very infrequently here in town. Board members may participate and vote after missing one public hearing. If we adopt this mulligan rule, there is a state statute out there that says, the city in town, the city town even so adopts it, you have to certify that you read the evidence and your certification, that must be filed with the town clerk. I have always been of the opinion, I did out there, don't vote. And I've always said, you know, the mulligan rules, but it's an option the board, they want to talk about in the future. Constructive grant, what's a constructive grant? Constructive grant is when you can't reach a decision or say a failure to act within a stated time period. An A and R plan have twenty, have twenty-one days. It used to be fourteen days. They changed that back in the eighties. Depending on subdivision plans, you have ninety days, one hundred and thirty-five days if you didn't have a preliminary plan. If you fail to follow your final decision with the town clerk within a specified timeframe, it goes by constructive grant. You're allowed to go down there, get a certificate, file that certificate, then the twenty-day appeal period starts. We try not to do that. They're very rare. Your staffs take care of that for you. Your role and responsibility is to sit there and meet the referees. If anyone by constructive grant, then it's your staff's responsibility. In this town, it's a staff responsibility.
And that starts rolling when they file, not when you first have it in front of people.
On the day they stand in at the town clerk, you have twenty-one days to file a decision on an A and R plan with the town clerk. If you don't do that, nothing good happens. Public outreach and participation procedures. Obviously, you have lots of meetings out there, they often posted. Occasionally, planning boards, we use public opinion survey, we've done that back in the nineties through the comprehensive plan. Visioning, we're doing that now. Springbys Road, with the Kitchcock Commission, we're going to be doing some of those charrettes regarding some sort of design issues on the North Harbor. We don't use social media, Facebook, Twitter, Twitter or blogs. You'd be amazed at the kind of dentists what they do with social media. I, I, I can't do it. So, so image analysis or visual preferences, community vis, walk-through T V stuff, we're kind of working around that with G M S. See if we can get that for you. Websites and other things, but we try to get out there and be transparent and open in this board scheme, especially for your regulatory role, especially for planning boards and their planning boards. We're not going to talk too much about these tonight because that's part of the second level. We talked about, we're not going to talk about that. Those are other training courses we'll get into much later. Just know that typically, your staff takes care of you, the records act, open meeting law, you can't, under certain circumstances, you may have chance encounters, but do everything here in town hall or as a designated public place and act as a board, that's your role and responsibility. So we'll get into a little bit of the zoning act, so you know what that's a little bit about.
Brian, could we just pause for a second to see if there's anyone, we have a small group of people here, but Ollie Fitzpatrick, others that might have a question or comment on, at least I'm part of it.
You're going to pass the quiz?
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll touch a little bit about the history of the zoning act here in the Commonwealth. Assistant Planner Training Collaborative has a course on the zoning, introduction to the zoning act, I just taught it in town. So again, this is cursory, this touches the surface, a little history. Zoning in Massachusetts goes actually back to nineteen thirty-three, they adopted the, Massachusetts adopted the Department of Commerce's State Zoning Enabling Act back in the day, it was an enabling act. It actually flowed out of the Department of Commerce back in the twenties. But the history of zoning actually goes back to eighteen nineties in the city of Boston. City of Boston had a high rate of... The city of Boston had a high rate of issues around the Capitol and in the back bed. It can only be a certain height. And actually, a lot of the US Supreme Court cases in 1909 and 1919 came out of the Boston hyperdishes. Not the 1922 case, if you might be familiar with the included case. It actually started in Boston. But just because of that, the State Department or the Commerce Department put together this standard state zoning in the American twenties, but the Commonwealth of Massachusetts ended up adopting it until 1933. There were some changes back made in 1954. It was rewritten and codified as chapter 48. The last time the zoning act in Massachusetts was really updated was chapter 80A, the acts of 75. And that's when it was taken out of being an enabling act, of the subdivision control law. Very prescriptive, you can do this, you can do that. It became a home rule act. It only has to, your bylaw, your zoning bylaw simply has to be consistent with the state and the US Constitution and not in conflict with any general statute. After 1975, you start seeing a plethora of things like overlaying, wildlife, aquifer protection, all those things flow... A lot of environmental laws were written in the seventies, eighties, and nineties. But one of the issues that we always have to balance is individual property rights and values, standards and values of the community. And it's just a standard for development. That three-dimensional box, height, setbacks, coverages. Those are the types of things you do under zoning. You prevent nuisance, so there's nuisance law. We talk about those roles and responsibilities and jurisdiction determinations. For the health, those health regulations. Zoning was a separation of interests. We're going to keep the slaughterhouse a lot away from the village to protect public health. That's the concept of zoning when it comes to public health. And we try to conserve some land for appropriate uses. So you regulate land use patterns. You have districts, you have regulations. When you have a zoning bylaw, ordinances are only in cities. There's a difference between ordinance and a bylaw. Ordinances are in cities, bylaws are in towns. You also have to have a map. Some towns have a map, but it's not as... It has to have the districts clearly delineated. And it has right, it has uses. A zoning bylaw has your byright compared to those before. Certain byright uses that require a site plan review. You have special permit uses that might also require a site plan review. And you have variances. The variances, where the board of appeals, for equal protection purposes, will vary in the bylaw to protect those interests. That's when a board of appeals acts as a, it's being known as a board of equity or board of justice. That's when you act as a board of relief, is when you issue a variance. And uses may be listed as prohibited, necessarily have to be. If it's not listed as a used amount of right or by special perimeters, it is de facto prohibited. Site plan review is a creature of local government. It flowed out of the fact that prior to 1975, only a zoning board could issue special permits. And so the town of Canton, back in the fifties, got very clever and decided to have this sort of administrative review. And one of the big litmus cases was a DY dugout versus town of Canton. Everyone has to read that in graduate school. It's a discretionary review. It's not a perfect plan. You review it according to a calculus set up in the bylaw or your regulations. Check, 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 check. And if, in fact, it meets the checks, it goes. It's a review, it's not a... Courts have upheld it as an administrative function. Whether a zoning board or a planning board in the town of Barstool is done by the staff. The board's standard staff driven. Years ago, the town planners reviewed site plans under a certain threshold and approved them. I thought it to be somewhat invidious responsibility because I always found myself getting in trouble on planning board. So now I just said, "Oh, I'll just try and do it." Because I've been in this town for a long time. Traditionally, it's used for byright uses. We use it a lot sometimes for special permit uses. It helps the special permit grant authority determine whether the use should issue. A lot of the issues that come forward as part of the site plan review process. And we should always have standards for site design and review. You'd be amazed at the number of towns that don't have it. We have that whole section of performance standards that we put in the nineties when we first got here. We didn't have it. Those were put in back when John Holstein and I first got here, back in 1990, to have the stormwater, the site design, parking, all that came in back in the nineties. We didn't have it. A little bit too discretionary, as it said. And special permits, so this is, a special permit is issued by a special permit granting authority. Whether or not it can be the zoning administrator. Section 348 exempts certain things from special permits. Educational, religious, we discussed this at town meeting. Agricultural, certain housing for individuals who are handicapped. You have to have your rules and regulations. Your public hearing within 65 days of the act occasion being filed with the town clerk. Typically speaking, you folks don't have to worry about these things because your staff does it for you, but there are time constraints. That's why sometimes we put things on the agenda just to get them going. Give you some decision flexibility. Again, there's a voting quota. This planning board, we'll be seeing a special permit Tuesday. Five of the seven board members must vote in the affirmative for this special permit to issue. And next Tuesday, I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on what special permits are because this planning board has a majority that I don't believe has ever issued a special permit. Which is why we're here today. If you don't use it, it lapses within two years. Variance, I think it's one year. Surprise, one year?
Yes.
What's the difference between constructed or not substantially constructed? How do you define that?
Usually, it's up to the board itself to determine whether or not there's a substantial use of a special permit that's issued.
We leave it to Aladio Gore. Because usually, if the permits are already being issued, unless it's variance, then it doesn't count.
I'm of the opinion that if you even mortgage your property in good faith and rely upon the permit, you're going to do it. In certain instances, you actually have to go out there and turn some dirt and do something. But typically speaking, the board is pretty lenient with these two-year...
So a foundation would be more than adequate?
More than that. And I'm always of the opinion that, you know, the way things go sometimes in the financing world around here, you can get this stuff down in two years. You're done, very well.
Brian, just to put clarification, wasn't there a special legislation a couple of years ago at the downturn in the economy, and it was just renewed? It actually extended to three years and, I think 40 is forgiven, a permit. Although 48 used to say to, by special legislation that was passed, it's been extended because of the downturn in the economy.
Is that still in effect right now?
Yes. It was just renewed recently.
It was just approved in August, it was just approved in August.
But in our bylaw, and in the state law, it's two years, but the legislature, because of the credit markets, has extended that to more generally. It ends in four. So ZBAs, they grant variances. In the town of Utopia, these are the criteria we use. And I know this board has been pretty good about variances. It's a disfavored form of really, to be sparingly granted, say the courts. But it's all about circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of the land or the structures. You have an odd ball structure out there that involves a substantial hardship without the variances. In the example I always give zoning boards throughout the Commonwealth is the Big Rock example. I have an area of land in a neighborhood that's fairly flat, featureless plain. It's divided up into lots. But my lot in the middle has a giant boulder in the soils, shape. I have to blow that rock up in order to meet the setback requirements, but my neighbor's done. So the law as applied to me doesn't afford me equal protection because I have a financial hardship because I have to blow up the rock and move it out of the way. Therefore, the bylaws applied to me is unfair and unconstitutional. We can apply a variance procedure to that. And that's the example that typically gives desirable relief with that substantially derivative intended by law. If you do that, everything's great. We don't allow use variances anymore that used to be allowed in the community. A use variance, unless it's expressly in your bylaw, shouldn't be granted. Use variances were applied, I think, over on Palmer Avenue, there's new buildings, but they're already actually use variances. But the Commonwealth decided that it wasn't such a hot idea, but it's essentially a three-member appointed board can overturn a voting tally. And so they pretty much got rid of use variances back in 1975. And as you know, you have 100 days to act on a variance.
Brian, just to put a comment on the hardships. I think more significant than even that. It's not a substantial hardship because one could say, "Oh, I have a hardship." And as the language talks about a financial hardship, and it's not the financial hardship to the individual who might say, "Gee, I can't get a mortgage" or whatever else. It's a financial hardship related to the land.
To the land.
Which is really significantly different. And it eliminates those people who may create their own hardship for, let's say, an architectural reason. "We'd like to build the house so it has a larger sunroom, but we're too close to the street." That's something that's self-imposed, and this board does not grant hardships.
In the key words there, condition shift of the land or structure. I may have a structure, I may have a... I'll look into that. I may have a structure that is very, very, that might require a height and because of a silo. But we have provisions for silo. The classic example is, "I want to pull, put a pool in my backyard because I can't afford to take my kids to Kipcot anymore because, you know, I got college bills." And I, you know, lots of town, "Oh, you're good, oh, fine, off you go." But that's not a circumstance relating to, it's relating to your personal financial considerations. You're not supposed to consider that.
But it does say, "Or structures."
It might be that to use your structure is fairly rare. You need some sort of relief from the bylaw because in order to have my silo, I need a certain amount of height or whatever. We've tried taking care of that by allowing certain agricultural exemptions and height. Very, very rare. Typically, it's always related, some issue with the way... I have a wetlands here. I have an isolated pocket of wetlands. It has to be as particular to your property. I have kettlehole topography, modern kettle topography throughout the brain. Not particular to my, so in my neighborhood, people have the same problems. So it's not particular to me. But if I have a glacial erratic in the middle of the Mashpee Outwash Park and sitting in the middle of my lot, and I have to blow it up and move it out of the way, well, that's the soil condition out of my making. And when they apply these setbacks to me, apply those setbacks to my neighbor, it's unfair, it hasn't literally applied. Equal protection, grant you relief from the Lucas model. No, you have to be 100 feet from the shoreline if the law says 100 feet. Well, what, you've just taken my property, you need to compensate because there's no equitable relief that I can go for except to go to court. Go to court. Always US Supreme Court, you won. You have to have a variance.
But what if you share the wetland with your neighbor, the neighboring lot? Does it have to be specifically located just on your lot?
No, it's a judgment, it's a case-specific judgment that the board gets at the time to see whether or not it's more neighborhood-related or much more specific than maybe one or two properties. But it doesn't have to be confined to your particular...
I mean, but one, a lot of them might want a variance and the other one doesn't. The flip side of it is that we don't give relief to a zoning district. But somebody who's asking a variance simply wants to be able to use their property as the rest of the district might. So if you have a general residence district and because of that boulder in the lot that Brian said, they can't build a single-family house, which is allowed by the zoning district. It's not a variance to allow a commercial structure. It's just a variance to, for example, setbacks, et cetera, in order to be able to use a single-family residence.
Use variances are allowed.
And what, excuse me, so what relief? If you, if you allow a smaller setback from the property next, next to it, what relief does that person, what this relief does the abutter have? What, they might say, you might say at your hearing, you know, the person might say, "I don't, I don't want that house closer to my, to my..." So then what? Well, they don't have relief. They have the right, at least at the hearing, to object. Yeah. And then they may be considered an aggrieved party. They could actually file an appeal based on the board of appeals decision. So they go into court and say, "It was arbitrary, capricious. It didn't follow the requirements in 48, et cetera." More likely, you're going to see a variance, for example, on a garage in the front yard closer than 50 feet to the road because of a topographical feature or a wetland. And typically, you might see a number of houses that have already been built that have garages in the front yard closer to the street. So I don't think we see too much of somebody looking for something out of the ordinary. They want something that's ordinary, but they have a particular piece of property because of those conditions, they can't get without relief. But there's always an appeal process if you're an aggrieved party.
Okay, so comp permits, comprehensive permits, boards of appeals. It's an opportunity under that statute to consolidate all your local under one board. So the board of appeals, when they hear of comprehensive permit, they act as the planning board under the subdivision control law. They'll act as the conservation commission under the local bylaw. It's a way to come in and to get all your local regulations in one place, expedite the process. And obviously, you have the same types of notifications, hearings, and decisions that you would have any other permit, except that, you know, some of the quotas are different. And obviously, the appeal process is different for a comprehensive permit. It goes to the hack, the appeals committee, instead of court for favorable decisions and appeal by butters. But it's a way to have affordable housing advanced here in this community and others.
Just one comment, I'm sorry to interjecting, but it's also for our members as well. What we do, on one hand, as Brian said, we stand in the role of all of the local boards. We don't, however, want state regulations. So the State Wetlands Act, for example, we don't deal with that. The conservation commission still does. The sanitary code is a state code. We don't deal with that. The board of health, it still deals with that.
Right. The town of Norwell found out all about that when they had the conditions and they were summarily removed, either because it exceeded their authority or it was a state jurisdictional issue or the DHCD was taking care of certain places with regards to, say, regulatory. Exceeded their authority. There's some help out there for comp permits. Sometimes we use the Housing Partnership. Our friends at the Department of Housing and Community Development have guidelines and regulations and some policy decisions that flow out of their 40B regs. We return to them when... We return to them when necessary, but this board typically makes their own decisions and does a fine job. Roles and responsibilities of the board is, is your decision. It's something Doug was talking about, it's the record of all the evidence that was presented to the board during its proceedings. And that's what you're supposed to be acting on. It's the foundation upon your, of your rest. If all, if you're a mountain of evidence, and all of a sudden make a decision, like based on something else outside the record, someone might say, well, how can you come to that conclusion, because it's not in front of you. We can say that's not in front of you. You can't use some of your intuitive judgments based on the record. You can accept or reject the record findings. You don't have to accept them. The traffic report comes in, I've never seen a traffic report in 33 years that hasn't come back saying everything is going to be just fine. What's to worry? You're not, see your clock. And that happens a lot. You have the right, doesn't mean it's accept everything, even if it's expert testimony, you get to use your judgment as a form. Sometimes it's difficult to refute expert testimony used in courtrooms, but you have the right to make up your own mind. You make findings, there's substantial evidence to your findings. I find the traffic to be just fucked, or I don't make, or I think it's not fucked, I I've experienced something. The neighborhood came in and said, I remember the traffic backed up three miles because of X, Y, and Z. So there's something there to support your thinking and then your findings. Your findings, don't protect the board from legal challenges, but it really helps explain your decision. You find that based on X, you decide Y. The public will have more confidence in your decisions if you have some findings of fact and decisions that are on the record every, every time. Especially, as you know, boards, sometimes you have to make unpopular decisions. We made a very hard decision on a plan, that in your heart, you said to yourself, I, my neighbors are going to say, what were you thinking? So sometimes you have to make very unpopular decisions. But if the record is clear, this is why we're doing things. Typically speaking, your constituents will accept that. Your records should include the application, I, I can't stress that more importantly. We have applications upstairs that make no sense, you don't even know what they're doing on certain applications for other boards, usually we reject them out, you guys, you guys. The application starts the entire process, section, what you're doing, I can answer that on another training module, but it's, it's the, it's the key to everything. Your correspondence between your applicants and your intended staff, including email correspondence, anything written by members of the public. You may cite certain evidence presented at hearings, all your plans and drawings, you'll see your decisions, I write for the planning board, you approve a plan entitled, drawn by, dated, revised, it's very important, lots of times, we approve the plans. Your notices, your hearings, and any other records, and most importantly, your findings. We try to have findings, every decision of the board, even if it's a plan you do, we try to have findings of fact. And findings of fact, obviously, are statements of evidence supported by facts. If there's no evidence given, if there's no evidence given to meet the necessary standards, this lack of necessary evidence should be shown. It should not be assumed in your decision, you should always state, there was no evidence given to us that this was going to create a traffic problem. Zoning issues, you can look at aesthetic, one of the big things we talk about, I know as planning zoning boards, is aesthetic issues, it's typically science, landscaping, you can't get into certain things like the beauty of the facade, the architectural standards, that's reserved for other roles and responsibilities of other boards in specialized districts. Tuesday night, Historic District Commission will be, will take care of certain things on the green, and you guys and the planning boards will be, you know, off we go. Non-conformities, one of the biggest issues we face as boards, but planning and zoning boards, is the creation of non-conformities, and the amortization of non-conformities. 240 dash 3, Section 648, just some of those rather comprehensive sections, we do our best, this town actually did very well, I think, in how it chooses not conforming structures and noises. Family and group daycare homes, I know we're going to talk about silverhouses again Tuesday night, not a big issue, family and group homes. Recently, but certain types of alcohol and drug-free residences have sort of been such an issue in the community. I mean, actual housing used to be a big issue back in the 80s, it's not so much anymore. 48 exceptions, Dover amendment issues, the gown versus town issues, we let the city of Medford fight against UTEC University, University School on that. Fested rights means grandfathering, there are many issues getting into a lot of grandfathering issues, we've been talking about that all the time, should you grandfather something or not grandfather something? This town is always grandfathering. The bylaw has pages of exemptions on grandfather uses or dimensions or subdivisions of lots, where this works for us. Like I said, amortization of non-conformities, so it's always an issue. Spot zoning, we've got a lot of spot zoning questions, one of the train sessions we'll have again is, I know the board wants this as a spot zoning tutorial. There's been 19 cases of spot zoning in the Commonwealth, and I talk about all 19. Typically speaking, I think it was 15 out of 19, and 10 is a very, very difficult chance to spot zone. Contract zoning, contract zoning, we used to do a little bit of contract zoning, it was a type of covenant, of course, kind of thrown that out, back in the 90s, we had some type of contracts, so if I write a covenant, I'll use this, business three zoning, but I'll write a contract, I'll only build a restaurant, I won't build condos. You can't bargain away your police power. So contract zoning was an issue, somewhat settled now, folks have come back, well, can we try again? No, contract zoning, we just don't do anymore, we don't negotiate. Zoning is an exercise of municipal police power, we just don't negotiate it. If it's good for business three, it's good for business four, period. The Religious Land Use and Internationalized Persons Act is a federal law, Rupa law, it came, it was implicated in certain applications years ago down on Bay Harbor Square with the church. We haven't had to deal with the Rupa law for quite some time. In Massachusetts, state law, Dover amendment accepts religious use, so we don't have to usually deal with a federal Rupa law act here in the Commonwealth, lots of other states, California, Florida, Texas, lots of case law, you can't have your Baptist church here. That's why Rupa law came into, into being. Cell towers used to be a big deal, since I'm selling them, there's federal preemptions there. The happiest day of my career here in Falmouth was when the sign law, bylaw went from zoning to a general bylaw. We got to do it, I mean, up to Ali.
Yeah, Ali, yeah.
And now I know the happiest day of my life, right?
Well, the reason we did that was vested rights, zoning vested rights, the Commonwealth statute has great vested rights issues, so if you want to remember the AMP sign down on Scranton Avenue years ago, it was always my poster child for why we need a general bylaw for signs, because we can amortize the signs better under a general bylaw than we can the zoning bylaw, we've worked with the Chamber of Commerce, and it happened. We've had some adult parenting business issues, we had an adult bylaw back in 1977, I think it is, but very rarely do we have, is that implicated? But that's first amended issues, often surface, sometimes we have those issues, and other times we hear about, so far it's a good place. Some criticisms of conventional zoning, again, I used to talk, my first zoning was all about separation of land uses. Now we're kind of seeing that, that 20s and 30s thinking about separation of land uses come back on this more mixed use. You see that on East Main Street again, you see some more of that. Back in the 50s, the interstate highway system, you know, my dad used to work, we lived up in the suburbs, we're seeing a contraction of that thing now all the time. It's called form-based codes, we're going to talk about that a little bit later on. We don't care so much about the use, people care more about what it looks like, how it operates. I don't care if you have apartments above your restaurant. Form-based codes are used in other parts of the country very efficiently, so I'm using them here in Massachusetts. Someday, when the Commonwealth decides on 1975, Chapter 808 is going to have to quit, maybe we can start talking about form-based codes and focus a little bit more on design than use, and see what happens. We talked briefly at the beginning of our topic here about overlay zones, we have aquifer, wildlife, and a lot of overlay zones. We have design review, which is a design review case here. We don't have form-based codes yet, we're kind of working on that a little bit, we want to talk about that, in Davisville Square perhaps, or in this new study we're doing around public history, to have more form-based codes, more traditional neighborhood design, we'll talk about that on East Main Street. I know my friend Rich, who's not here tonight, is big on performance zoning, performance zoning says you can't exceed certain thresholds of 10 decibels parts per million, very hard sometimes, it's, we call that smokestack zoning back in the day, you know, noise, vibration, odors, dust. We don't have to worry about that so much here on Cape Cod, because we're not a smokestack country. Low-impact development? I'm not sure that we're going to talk about that tonight. Transit-oriented development, we're going to see a transit-oriented development of a Kingston. There is a 40D law here in the Commonwealth, I don't believe it's 40 units an acre right now. Up at the Kingston, everyone knows that area up there, that you're going to see where the MBTA station is, that's the type of zoning law that I think is used well elsewhere, doesn't make a lot of sense, 40D makes a lot of sense here in Falmouth, not yet, till the mono rail comes back. We have solar and wind bylaws, you know that. We do have a little smart parking on East Main Street, we're going to be talking more about transfer of development rights, transfer of development rights is, you give up your right over here, and we can use it over here. Dave Peterson used it to great success in the Long Hill subdivision. We're actually, Falmouth is actually a case study at DHCD on transfer of development rights. It's apparently used throughout the Commonwealth, but it's a nice arrow of equity to have, and they've used it to a certain extent successfully. And we have lots of open space subdivisions, planned residential developments, and of course, we have your cluster subdivision, open spaces. Couldn't do that under the old enabling statute part of 1975. We had that cluster zoning bylaw back in the 70s. Okay, zoning adoption, Section 5, 48, is initiated by, the zoning board initiates, selectmen, planning board, land owners, the older hearing planning board, we're going to be having some on the 19th, within 65 days, it was published, you make a report at a town meeting, it can be either written or, or, the state law says you go first. A two-thirds vote, always at town meeting, always a super majority in quantity of vote. I like that, it should be a two-thirds vote, I've heard a lot of, I've heard a lot of players whine about that. It's an important decision, but not designed for the to buy a new chassis for the evidence. Zoning decisions often have much larger fiscal implications than some of our finance community. And we submit them to the attorney general's office for approval, and we haven't had one rejected in many years. So move a little faster here, planning, planning boards, pay attention, zoning boards, you never know, the manual says here you can rest, but I think it's, it's important stuff. Planning boards, we talk about visioning a lot, you know, we talk about vision maps and whatnot, like a good planning board shouldn't vision out a horizon of 10, 15 acres. In Connecticut, there's planning boards, zoning boards, and zoning boards of appeals. Planning boards do the planning, you don't have to worry about zoning bylaws or anything like that. Appeals boards take up appeals of equity, and zoning boards do, they write the zoning bylaws. I think that's a really nice model. Here, that's, at least in Connecticut, the planners plan, that's your role and responsibility. Anticipate, protect, and we try to, this last bullet point is very important, it's often a criticism the boards get, you know, we try to minimize our impacts. Let's have whatever, sorry, and sometimes we don't, we, we need to consider some of the cost implications. Planning boards under state law are responsible for the master plan, believe it or not, the state law says you shall develop a master plan, there's no penalty if you don't. We try to involve other boards to include economic development, EDIC, neighborhoods, things of that nature. We try, local planning, he knows this very well, but we, planning board members, we'd always try to have our goals and policies brought to town meetings, we'll see some of this next town meeting, economic development, and energy, wastewater, and one more. We tried to talk about, we tried to talk about housing and economic development, we have a housing production plan, which is an action plan, we have a housing study going out again on the CPA Act, days and things. We have an open space and recreation plan that's approved by the state every five years, but we're going to be updating it again here this year. That's how we get all those park grants, what we get for the driving range, for a streetcar's road, you have to have that open space and recreation plan, it's your responsibility. Obviously, we help you with that. Services, facilities, and circulation, we typically don't do that here, we try not to do that, that's typically, typically, they didn't spell for strategic planning stuff at the Select, we do it in the board of public boards. We talked about energy, we have a social services element in our local comprehensive plan here, we try to talk with neighborhood and village associations. Standard preservation, we do have that in our local comprehensive plan, we're going to have a preservation plan, the historic toll commission has a preservation consultant coming on board, we're going to try to incorporate a lot of that into the local comprehensive plan. We have an arts, we're still working on design, sustainability, and other environmental programs, this is more the up-and-coming planning things, like some of those you're going to see in the next couple of years before retirement. Roles of planning board, obviously, you know, your master plan, you should be spearheading some form-based public policy processes, try to be advocates for decision-making here, you're elected officials especially, you have these, those joint meetings with other elected boards, which are the boards of Select. Board of appeals members, we have a good relationship here, I'm not sure whether we've had a master plan represented, I think we should, lots of towns do that, up to you both, I know you're busy, but I think it's important that those representations are here, because a plan is only as good as sometimes as those we connect to. Let's see, we've got the comprehensive plan for planning board members, we try to make it a policy framework here at town, we all try to beat the nuts and bolts and drive things, the local comprehensive plan is goals and policies, the selectmen have their strategic plan, the housing people have their production plan, the regulation department has the open space and recreation plan, so we have these acts, we have a comprehensive plan, okay, then we have action plans that implement. And that's the type of, of structure I think works very well, that's why I always say the board should be visionary, role, role of the planning board is to look out 20 years, don't worry about the minutia so much. Hard to do. Hard to do, but it should really, it should really be that type of a plan. Our board has done that, we've reached out, we've had visioning sessions, we have listening sessions. What do you want? It's oftentimes overlooked. Don't let it be a planning board plan, let it be a community plan. We've done this, we have identified issues, we do our inventory for you. You formulate the policies, you formulate the implementation schedule, and off we go. The key thing is public participation. We have a training module on how to do a planning. It always starts with the vision and the public participation. The plan follow-up, key here, planning board members, roles and responsibilities. Implement the plan through zoning, financing, other tools. Planning board members are typically not the implementers of any of it. Other boards, I see why I think it's important that zoning boards, the EDIC, we brought them into the discussion, the Selectman. Because planning boards are up in the cosmos, they're up here. It's a beautiful place to be sometimes. And others typically, because they're empowered, that's their role and their responsibility. Implement the plan and you bring it to town meetings. The zoning boards will implement the zoning. The DPW will implement the transportation. The Red Committee will implement the open space. Let them do their work, it's a team. Just like, right back, we're going back to the beginning. If the board, the planning board sees that as their role, things tend to work a little bit more efficiently. All right, back to the more mundane. Subdivision control law is an enabling statute. It's enacted for these purposes. And the enabling statute says it's all about access in subdivisions. It's not about road control, it's not about zoning at all. The subdivision control law in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is about laying out of ways and utilities. That's all the statute enables you to do. Used to be boards of survey back in the 1900s. Back in 1936, they had a specific provision about the improved methods of municipal planning. It used to be you took your plan up until 1936 and just walked it down to the registry of deeds and there it is. There was no planning board involvement up until 1936. Up until 1936, you could have boards of surveys, these have happened, then it went down to the registry of deeds. The state is wrong, it was actually 1947. The subdivision control law was enacted, 1953 is when they added the approval of not required process. But the subdivision control law was adopted here in this community in 1950. It was adopted by town meeting in '47. It doesn't become effective until you accorded your rules and regulations to clerk, the land court recorder in the registry of deeds. And that happened the day of 1950. This gets related to your questions, Doug. It's a mountainous litigation, but... Is the, a subdivision in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is a division of two or more lots? So we saw that A&R plan on Timboree Cartel, where it was a division of land into one lot and an unbuildable parcel. Not a subdivision by definition and entitled to your endorsement for building a lot. Because that's what the enabling statute says you have.
Buildable lots.
Buildable lots. And the appeals court's upheld it. I don't make the rules. There's actually four ways you measure that. You're on a public way. And more importantly, a way that city or town clerks may certify is used as a public way. And when I worked in the city of Waymouth, a very smart developer, Waltson... Having in the opinion of the planning board, not the fire chief, not the town planner, not the building commissioner, not anybody else, in the opinion of the planning board. That's just you guys. But sometimes they'll come in and say, "Well, I have a letter from the fire chief that says it's just fine." The opinion of the planning board has sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction. Now, you may rely on the opinion of the engineer, or the fire chief, or the planner, or whoever. Is it wide enough? We talk about 18 feet. 90 degree point of openness, the fire truck to pass, that's why I need 18 feet. Suitable grades, meaning vertical and horizontal grids. Inadequate constructions, is it a dirt road? Does it have drainage? It's the most difficult decision you'll make as a planning board under the approval of not required process. Or as a zoning board under the 40B process. Amounts of litigation, case-specific. It's a flat, a dirt road might work in a spot up there on Timboree Cartel. It's not going to work up on the Marais, where you have a 10%, 20% grid. So it's a much, it's a very, very difficult decision, but it's something that, you work as a team. Ask the engineer, ask the planner, formulate in your minds. Don't ever go it alone when it comes to approval of not required plans under this exemption of a definition. You'll hear me say to you, "It doesn't meet the definition." By definition, it's entitled to endorsement. But don't go it alone, you can ask for opinions, but it's obviously dirt code. You have to adopt rules and regulations. It's known as the castle estate standards. They have to be reasonably clear and sufficiently, reasonably clear and carefully drafted so the applicant knows beforehand what will be required to gain your approval. You can't have in your rules and regulations under the subdivision control law, water service adequate for all. You've heard me say it's an undefined standard. You're not enabled to enforce that undefined standard. That's called the council estate status. One of the most important cases was North Landers Corporation versus the planning board of Fowl back in 1979. It actually started in 1977, that's the value of status. About whether or not your rules and regulations were sufficiently clear, reasonably drafted, beforehand, you won, by the way. But you have to have them. You determine whether a plan is A&R, if you like. You review and disapprove your current definitive plans. You hold hearings, you release lots. Now, 40B projects especially, you require performance guarantees and bonds in subdivisions. Typically speaking, the town engineer gives your report, whether or not the road is complete. And then you can release a lot from the covenant or a bond. Sometimes it just shows up on your agenda as released, seems like someone performing all the time. But in the past, there have been issues with regards to release of lots. And you advise the zoning board on comprehensive permits, especially in matters on the subdivision control law. Because the zoning board oftentimes is not familiar with some of the nuances of the subdivision control law, and they act as a mobile board under the 40B. We have conventional subdivisions, we have cluster open space subdivisions. We see in this community, to your, congratulations, we see more clustered open space subdivisions than conventional subdivisions. Grid subdivisions, yeah. We don't see as many approval of not required subdivisions because there's just not enough land out there to set up. Again, I talked about preliminary plans, tracing paper, definitive plans where the rubber hits the road, and A&R plans where the lines of litigation come from. Again, subdivision control law is just about laying out of roads and drainage, utilities, and the lots that go to them. So you have to have all these types of standards in your rules and regulations you need to. Pretty comprehensive, but it's all about building roads. Preliminary plans. You have to file a preliminary plan in a non-residential subdivision. So if you have an industrial subdivision, you have to file a preliminary. Otherwise, it's discretionary for residential subdivisions. There are no rights of appeal, there are no recordabilities of preliminary plans, notwithstanding the fact that I, we got dragged out to the probate court for litigation here. Someone's estate with regards to a preliminary plan, I was trying to get rid of that, I was just spent two days trying to explain that. Again, definitive subdivision plans, you can, a planning board may approve, modify, or deny a plan. You can only deny a plan. You have to specify in your rules and regulations where it's deficient. You can tell them to change it so it is in compliance. It's very, very rare that you actually deny a definitive subdivision. In my tenure here at the Council of London, it has to be usually a plan so egregious that there's just no way to amend it or waive your standards to make it work. And then they're recorded at the registry of deeds, and they have to be recorded within six months from the date of endorsement. Because there is zoning implications for grandfathering rights. Your Section 6 definitive plan protections go into effect for eight years from the date of endorsement. So there was a very clever person here who waited eight years to get his plan endorsed, and then claimed the eight-year exemption under the zoning law. That went away too. All right, so we talked about that, a little bit about our preliminary plans, there's no public hearings for preliminary plans. Again, a definitive plan has to send to the Board of Health, and they have 45 days. In other towns, boards of health, especially if there's a lot of wetlands or a town that's on a water supply situation that we have here. I have seen them say no. And the planning board has, under the enabling statute, no discretion, nor a denial. I see nor denials of definitive plans for that purpose, that under your rules and regulations. Excuse me for a moment. This is where the Board of Appeals under 40Bs, under subdivision control law, you have the right to acquire a parter bond. Or some form of covenant or guarantee that the work is actually going to get done. Usually speaking, the planning board simply requires a covenant upfront. A covenant is a promise good for 30 years that we won't sell, convey, or build on the lots until we comply with the board's decision. 90% of the time it comes in, it gets recorded. The bank is your best friend. I love the reverse bank attorneys because when I see a planning board covenant, they will never mortgage the property. It simply is your best friend. So if some planning boards don't like covenants, want a bond, it's up to the applicant. The applicant chooses the form they want. Typically, they get a covenant, they put in all the deep utilities first, they bring the road up to binder course, and then they bond the rest, just for cost considerations. I always tell planning boards and boards of appeals that you don't really want a bond for the entire road. Because let's say the guy goes bankrupt, and all of a sudden you have two of your homes in there, you've got a bond, the town has to build the entire road. So let the guy or the developer go in, put the deep utilities in, get the road up to binder course. Smart developers also use what's known as a tripartite agreement. A tripartite agreement is a, the town actually takes back a first mortgage. We let the bank do all the work. We can use them sparingly here in town, we can use them in Rolling Hills. Smart developers use them, that way they don't have to actually post their money. Then go get a construction though, we actually have a first position in the construction. I don't like combining them up, but sometimes we do that. And the applicant selects. We talked about a little bit approval of not required plans before, so I'll try to get going here, we're getting a little late. Public way, way in existence. And the key, the key thing is, it's not better access, it's adequate access. If you have adequate access, A&R endorsement. You might say, "Well, I like it to be 12 feet, not 10 feet." If they can do it, it's not, if you think they can do it, that is, can they do it? You have 21 days, consortium agreement, we talked about that. You cannot rescind an A&R endorsement. A definitive plan, you have the right actually to modify or rescind a definitive. Once you say okay to an A&R endorsement, once you say I do, you did. There's no way to go back and change it. So when someone comes to you and say, "Well, you can always rescind it later," no, you cannot. The ZBA may rest, okay, because you don't have a role. Again, we're trying to be a team here. Applicants oftentimes need other federal, state, or local reviews. Licenses from the Board of Selectmen, wetlands, Board of Health, historical commissions. The meatball process, the Army Corps of Engineers for permits and whatnot. Again, those are their jurisdictions, you don't have to worry about them sometimes. You get into constitution commission issues, we really don't need to worry about those things. We have fee schedules for everything. One of the things we need, sometimes talk about is consultant review fees. I don't believe we have them here, have the necessary, small towns have those more than the larger board, those towns here. Because even if you take the fee from the developer, they get to choose who that viewer is going to be, guess what the answer is going to be. I've never seen a traffic report come back.
Right, just on that point, in 40B on comprehensive permits, the zoning board does have the right, if an issue has been brought up by an applicant. And we don't have sufficient expertise in town to actually get the applicant to pay for the expertise that we may need. So if, for example, traffic were brought up by the developer, they gave us a report, we weren't comfortable with it, and we didn't have the expertise here. We can actually give them to fund it, and we have that in our rules. 48, or Chapter 44 also does allow it. I don't ever recall the zoning board since I've been on it doing it. But now that the planning board is getting involved in some specialized special permits, it is something that could be used when it's out of the realm of expertise that you might have on an issue that's been raised by an applicant.
Hey, we'll talk about that a little bit. Right now, we have some other resources coming to play, like the, we sent the traffic impact statement off to the Cape Cod Commission to use their expertise instead of development. I try to use existing resources before we go ahead in that direction, but that's very true. All right, so we'll get some little practical stuff here. I know this seems trite but true. And I won't, hate to pick on Mr. L, but you know, be on time. Read your packet before the meeting people. Everyone, this is when the board members all go like this, everybody, look, look, they're all going, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's okay to ask us for help. Know your zoning codes and know your comprehensive plan. You don't have to be an expert. Be familiar with the site. The first question the expert witness will be asked on the stand is, "Have you visited the site?"
And Google Earth doesn't come.
Right. No, I have not been to the site. Next witness. Try, visit the site. If you have some info... If you have some information, it's okay to share it. Share with the staff. The staff will be disseminated. Focus on some facts, not opinions. I spoke to that person, and they said, click. Third, and, for visual short cut here. Be a problem solver, not a problem maker, that's not a problem here. You can be probing, participate. If you can't do all these things, trite but true. Be conscious of your body language. We've had instances on the planning board and other boards, you know, you have, they'll pick you on, you have any. A little bit of words of wisdom, there they are. Have some fun, not be there, be a planning board. Don't take it personal, I never take it personal. You have to have a thick skin. Know the law, have some fun, and things will be just fine. Here are your sources of support. It's okay to talk to town hall staff, but here's some advice. I talked to attorney W. in December. Ask your staff to do that for you, because you act as a board. Your roles and responsibility is as a board member. You always get the answer you want sometimes by the question you ask. So it's important that everyone hears the same question, hears the same answer. Talk to previous board members, it's okay, you know, to get some background information. General laws are online, we have lots of plans and reports upstairs. Use your regional planning agency for certain planning issues, things that come into play. Don't ever use Tufts University, no, they're good. Here are some sources of support at the state level. Typically speaking, we don't use them as board members. There is, however, often times, we talk about issues that you're being, there's always a lawyer of the day at the state ethics division, that's my word, about you. They will not answer questions about somebody else. It's okay to use assistant player training collaborative if you wanted to call them up and ask them a question on something. They will also have training on demand. If you want to have them come down and talk about 40Bs, or planning, or hearings, or whatever it is, they'll find someone to come down and do it. Don't use mass planners, listserv. I never call those guys, because you just get thousands of emails from planners throughout the Commonwealth. They sometimes might as well inform as they should be. So that's a brief overview. Hope it's kind of informative, sometimes it engenders more questions than answers, but this gives you a start. Theme, to take home theme is, we're a team, don't do it alone. Focus on your roles and responsibilities first. Act as a board, typically speaking, things like, I don't care.
All right, a quick question. One of the slides there was about the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
And it talked about uses that are permitted by right, site plan review, special permit variances.
Yeah.
And it mentioned about uses may be prohibited. And did I understand you correctly that if it's not identified in the bylaw, then it's prohibited?
That's correct. Our bylaw, though, has this, section 18, that is not listed, if you look at it, it's not listed. It's prohibited, except if it's similar in its impacts, characteristics, the board appeals, could issue a special. So we actually have that categorical exception in our bylaw. The town meeting accepted that. The planning board came to town meeting years and years ago and asked them to move that because it was a de facto use variance. They decided to keep it. Remember that, Brian?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. But it's okay.
I remember a lot of them.
Yeah, me too. But yeah, it's not listed.
Any questions?
You good? All right. Any questions, answers? Well, we'll get, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you very, very much. Very useful. All right. Since Brian took most of the time, it's worth it. The next item on the agenda was something that we, as the zoning board, wanted to share with the planning board. And this is regarding the professional review of the zoning bylaw. And what I'm handing out to you is, I've circled article nine, which is for the annual town meeting coming up. Brian, do you have a couple of those?
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with them.
And to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of funding or review of the zoning bylaw, and to determine how the same shall be raised and whom expended, or do or take any direction on the matter. And this is being presented by the Board of Selectmen. This came out of our March joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen this past March. And at the time, with a number of topics that we talked with the Board of Selectmen, David Braga was there as well. And one of the issues we came up was a review of our zoning bylaw. And we had talked about the number of modifications that had been to the zoning bylaw since 1979, which I think has somewhere around 180, 180.
Really, no?
Yeah. And that many things had changed since that time, and it was interesting, the question that I asked Brian about if it's not enumerated, is it prohibited? And one of the examples we talked about was an issue that had come up regarding marine districts where, under special permit, it says, for example, that a special permit use is for a nonprofit yacht club. But it's silent as to a for-profit yacht club. It's not enumerated, and yet, is that something that's equitable? Is that something that was intended, et cetera? There are some inconsistencies as we try to apply the zoning bylaw. For example, on home-based service business, in the definition versus under the section under the bylaw, it will limit one of the non-resident employee to one in one section. In another section, it is two non-resident employees. So there are some internal consistencies that have gone on. On the flip side of, I'm sorry, I corrected this, it's my fault, but the flip side is, after we had the discussion with the Board of Selectmen, the board did vote to proceed with this, Board of Selectmen did, we developed a scope of services to try to look at what the value of the warrant article would be. And this is not to be confused with what I might call a simple reclassification of the bylaw, although part of that is true. We were looking for something that was more user-friendly for the board, for applicants, et cetera, that might include something like an index, so we could easily find things as we go through. But this is really to look at that history of the change of the bylaws and to see those things that have been modified perhaps because of case law, statutory law, and to come up with a document that could be useful and that could be built on in the future as we start to amend the zoning bylaw with town meeting. Although the recommendations have not come out yet, in a survey that we have done looking at communities that have gone through a similar process, we have found that for the first three items in the scope of services, that the minimum that we have found is $35,000 to have an outside professional, we've recommended an attorney, to look at those items and make recommendations. It could cost as much as an additional $20,000 for a total of up to $55,000 to go through four and five, which might be making recommendations, but also seeing the process through all of the necessary entities, which of course would be the planning board and ultimately town meeting. Now, when we talked about this with the Board of Selectmen, the goal is not to make changes in the meaning of the zoning bylaw, but to update the zoning bylaw for all of the court cases, the legal changes to make it easier to use. So that's what we came out of in that meeting in March. There are a number of other things that came out of that meeting, but this is the, I shouldn't say the first step because one of the things, and sorry, Brian, you've been doing this, in fact, there was a meeting, I think, this week, that getting the different departments together so that there could be a more comprehensive way of the departments working together on many issues. And there have been probably four or five of those meetings since the Board of Selectmen.
Two or three, four, yeah.
Four meetings since the Board of Selectmen. So we're starting to move through some of those recommendations that we have. And I'll open it up to the ZBA members in terms of supplementing at least any of the ideas that we have on this particular warrant article, how we came up with it. Patty, I know you were one of the folks that was, you know, quite adamant about moving forward with this.
I think there are a lot of sources online, there's a lot of ability now to see what other towns have done and have invested in updating their zoning bylaws, just how they presented it. We've got a lot of ideas just by searching, it's online. I mean, that helps because you can go read Westland's zoning bylaws, and you can read Wellesley's, or whatever towns you think have great, you know, zoning books, and you figure out how we should do it and present it in a more friendly way. It's the presentation a lot of times, it's, you know, this thing is.
And I think jointly the Selectmen and the Board of Appeals felt this would be a useful exercise for everyone, planning board in terms of developing modifications in the future. Our implementation of the zoning bylaw, applicants are being able to understand what's required of them and how to go about developing a good application. So I think that's what we're trying to do. I have a meeting coming up with the town manager, and the zoning board has authorized me to go forward with the finance committee, the planning, I mean, the Board of Selectmen and town meeting in terms of trying to get this article passed at town meeting and to try to get the minimum funding of the $35,000. So we just wanted to bring you up to date, and if you had any questions or thoughts on that.
I think part of the support at town meetings has got to come from people in the planning board or the zoning board, going to their precinct meetings and having people understand why we need this so they support at town meeting.
Is there no mechanism for, as you identify, issues in the, in the code that can be sort of changed along the way? Or have to be brought up all at once at town meeting?
There are. Over the years, and I can only speak of my tenure on the board, we have brought things through the planning board. I mean, generally through the planning, through the planning board for modifications. I mean, and some, as we know, with the two-thirds requirement had passed and others hadn't. And at one point, we wanted to look at the definition of a border that didn't go anywhere. On the other hand, based on a court case, we went to town meeting and with the planning board's support, actually clarified the issue of multiple lots, multiple dwellings on a single lot, and we had that date of May 19, 1959. So when we've come across problems, we've been able to do that. But there are also, but I will say, the problems that are lurking out there that we're not aware of, and why, again, the suggestion of a lawyer is, you know, there have been a lot of court cases. I mean, Brian mentioned earlier, as an example, Professor Bobrowski, who happens to be an attorney, and he's tutored many of the planners and zoning boards in the state, and is a resource to many courts. So things keep changing, and we sort of want to keep up with it, but also to make it easier when, again, you look at just the back of the zoning bylaw and you see all of the amendments that have occurred. It is, it is not necessarily the simplest of documents. Though after nine years of involvement, I still carry my zoning book with me to every hearing. I can answer a question off the top of my head because, not that you should, but it's complicated. And, you know, oftentimes you have to search for, you know, many places. Another example was under the existing real bylaw, the litigation that has come out of that because I think as the, because town council wasn't available to the zoning board, we did have outside special counsel who said, you know, you can't really interpret it. It's going to have to be something that you decide as a board member. Ultimately, it will be decided in court at this point. So some of those things, I think we could pin down, make it clearer for everyone.
Well, I think people don't realize we're going to try this. Just keep a record of places that you find are difficult, or things that are hard to understand, that could be made clear. And, you know, I just sort of been keeping them for years, and I always find another one.
A couple of examples we used was the definition, I mean, whether or not it's an acre or 40,000 square feet, I think in one place it even is 42,000 square feet. So there are different measurements within the bylaw, or how to go about measuring the height of a structure.
Height of the structure.
There are two different ways within the zoning bylaw to do that.
The little ones like front yard, where this is yard front, and the ones, you know, so all of a sudden, well, there's no front yard definition, but there's a side yard, but then you have to go and look at all the guy in the verse way later on.
I think over the years, the amount of amendments we've had, like I said in the back of the book, I mean, we're not going to count them, but, yeah. The amendments were made on one article, not necessarily looking at what they were going to impact from.
So rather than just fixing inconsistencies, you want to reorganize the whole thing sort of.
I think both of those things, yeah. Make it more usable.
The dimensional section is another one that's just way crazy.
I think another example was a special permit on county road where we had to apply the mixed-use piece of it, you know, commercial and, you know, residential, and applying that and counting. And that was probably the lengthiest permit that we've dealt with in a long time. So, you know, for sure.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you're pointed that way, so I can believe.
Channel with Mr. L.
Right. I would have to say truthfully that, once I got on the board, this was one of the prime things I wanted to see had done, to see done. On the other hand, it was expensive, and there was no support for the expense. And particularly in the last number of years in the economic climate that we've been in, there has been no support, no dollars to be able to do this because it's an expensive proposition. It's also true that I think the desire has been there for 40 years to do this. And as we find things, we have gone to town meeting and have generally gotten things passed rather readily if we put them under coastkeeping, which in fact, most of them are because there are internal inconsistencies. And so we get those passed, but we haven't had a professional pair of eyes.
To understand, because we had put the changes that have been made since the book that they printed like in 1982 or something, we got those all in. they created like in 1982 or something, we got those all in order in the book instead of attached or whatever they were done. So this is a big, you know, we made some changes, but we haven't faced up to the real issue.
I think we have to be able to answer the question at the town meeting, why, why our staff can't do it. So we have to have, we have to have that question answered right up front. And then the other thing is...
Competence.
Now, I mean, you know, it's, it's tough.
The other thing I think we need to emphasize at both precinct meetings and at town meeting is that it's not just for the zoning board of appeals and for the planning board, but it's for applicants.
Yes.
You have to make it user-friendly to the public and to us at town. And those are the, that's the way you're going to have to sell it, in my opinion.
I agree completely, Ralph. That's good advice and that's what we have to do.
It might be a good idea to do a little outreach to some of the developers and building, people that do a lot, have had problems with it, and maybe some lawyers and just have a meeting like this and take some of their feedback to as we develop it, but to hear from the people that actually use it and some of the problems they've had. Kind of like we do with the local comprehensive plan, we even talk into every group, every user group around and getting their feedback before we move forward. That might be something we could...
I think that's great and depending on what happens as it gets implemented by the town manager, I mean, the boards may be able to assist, you know, in terms of whoever this professional is that might be hired to work at the town and try to save money from the $55,000.
We could get some of this done without that, that person, you know, and then turn it over to them, they could follow up on it. But we'll be paying if they're at the meeting. And if we, you know, that's right.
And, you know, as Brian was saying, you know, the time in terms of his amount of time and Marlene's, the same with Frank and Pat Harris. They don't have the time to devote singularly to this and it's not something that is done every day of the week where there are individuals that have done this. I mean, in some of the inquiries that we have looked at in terms of other towns, I mean, there are literally dozens of towns that have done this within the past eight years or so. And some, by the way, that have taken eight years to perhaps do that. I'm not sure that's always a good thing because things are always changing. You want to be able to get in and get out pretty quickly, but with, you know, I think if we go in dribs and drabs to town meeting with housekeeping changes versus one, again, the intent is not to modify what's meant by the bylaw, although some things might come up that the planning board might want to, but it is to take all of the housekeeping things, find out those things that are inconsistent, things that may be outdated because of case law and...
Language that's updated.
The language.
The verbiage on some of it is just stuck that we don't really use it.
Number five, number five alludes to working with the planning board and town meeting to achieve successful revision. And if that's the last thing that's going to be done, I question whether or not the person is going to have, get the input that they're looking for before they go ahead with like a draft.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, you're saying it's number five and you...
I don't think it was funded, I don't think it was meant to be sequential in any way. Here are five items, so...
They meet with the planning...
But you did say, but you did sequence the funding of, that, that made me think that it was sequential.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to even sequence the funding. What I was saying is that $35,000 is clear from what we've contacted the other towns that we've talked about for three, those three items that happen to be listed first. What then gets another $20,000, which gets to be an expensive portion, is four and five. But I think we fine tune that. I mean, my desire, Ralph, would be to seek, I mean, I think of an example recently at town meeting, many of us are town meeting members, where the DNR came in with funding for the fish ladder at Cedar Lake and they needed $101,000, but they asked for $175,000 and town meeting gave it to them because there might be extra needs. What I would love to get is approval for $55,000 and if we don't need it all, we'll turn it back so that we can, but I think that's a good point.
But conversely, if you did present it this way and they only funded one, two, and
three, you'd be leaving out a dozen. Our practice doesn't work if you do that.
Oh, yeah, and I don't want to leave anything out. I mean, as, you know, again, the Selectmen have to work on a recommendation, a meeting with Julian and hopefully Jennifer Petit as well to see if we can come up with the full scope of the services and go from there. I think it'd be wrong to cut pieces of it out.
In 1982, when this, or '79, '82, when a lot of revisions were made in the, in the bylaws was brought more current, there was a lot of negotiation to, you know, to put something in. You know, Vicki Hall since she was involved in that earlier revision, you know, there were a lot of, you know, playoffs with, well, we can't, we really want this, but we can't get it unless we give this particular, you know, that's where all the black hole, nonconformities, grandfathering went in. It was a black hole. And I think, you know, if, if people want to really update this, we have to do something with some structural, I don't know, you know what I mean. Yes, there are some...
Yeah, there's some content and context invalidities through throughout the bylaw that need to be corrected.
Yes, they do need to be correct and we can't just sit here and say, oh, they're just going to pick and choose and get rid of the inconsistency.
I think you need a professional that's going to focus on it. We have, we have lots of wonderful staff in this building that can focus on this, but they also are focusing on 25 other real important issues that prioritize way above this and you need somebody that, you're paying to do it, just this for us.
And I think Tricia brings up a good point that, when I quickly read five again, it's certainly not the intent that this professional will not take advantage of the staff and the planning board. I think five, what was intended was when we've got a package ready to go, it obviously has to go to a hearing with the planning board and that that individual could work close, as Brian might with, you know, the typical changes to the zoning bylaw, but this professional might work closely with the planning board in terms of preparing for the hearings and then ultimately perhaps a presentation of preparing for town meeting.
We most certainly have to.
Yeah, it wasn't to exclude in the process staff or the planning board as we move along.
But any consultant that you bring in on a project like this is going to, is going to come in and speak to Brian, is going to come in and speak to Suri before they put any type of template together that people start working on.
What they usually do, I've been through a reclassification, how do I look to remember it? And that's exactly what they do. They take that bylaw first and read it. They find the inconsistencies, they make lists. Then they sit down with the town planner, nine times out of 10, they don't sit with any of the zoning staff because it is all done and has been done through the planning board and they work directly, pretty much with them. The whole review of their suggested changes or recommendations usually will go through the planning department staff, then the planning board, and then it's shared with the zoning board and appeals. But that's, you know, they don't do anything without sitting and talking with, and that's regardless of the scope of services unless, even if they just, if you want an opinion or recommendations, that's all done with them after they read them, so.
When I am hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, that we don't want to change the meaning of our bylaws. We want to keep that whole intact, but I'm going to comment from the perspective of, I don't think I want to see any of our fingers in it initially because what we're doing is paying a highly paid professional to come in with fresh eyes and look at this with fresh eyes. We are all so jaded by looking at this over so many years. It's like you proofread your own work? I don't think so. You look over the same mistakes again, I can tell you.
That's right, that's right.
I've proofread reports that sit on our shelves. I've proofread them three or four times. I didn't even write them. And we pull them off the shelf to use an example. My God, how do those errors get in there? And that was so...
Yes.
So I would rather, if I could have my brothers on this, say, we don't want to change anything, the intent, the content in a way, but we want it to be user-friendly.
Up to date.
We want it to be up to date if we're missing anything that's in, that we're in nonconformity with any of the new bylaws, new state laws. We want that with fresh eyes.
And I think a perfect example is that there are times that we'll get an applicant that goes back to town meeting to try to figure out what the intent was because the bylaw isn't really clear on it. So, I mean, that's some of the work that needs to be done and, but I think we...
They're going to, once they do that part of it, they're going to go and ask where the holes in it are, where you're running into problems, and that's where it's going to get adjusted if this guy, person's doing what they're being paid to do.
I don't even think they're going to have to ask, they're going to see it just by reading the first 25 pages.
Sure. Well, they also got, they have to also look at that reevaluation comprehensive plan. I mean, and what, as our plans say, and why can't you do it, you know, when they're here, are they, you know, they don't go together.
It's all back on your training. What did you learn tonight?
Yeah.
You're a team. Let, let those guys, or I go to a restaurant, I don't, I would like to have the way they've had it, please, and I don't go in the kitchen, start cooking, you know? So I would like to have more consistency, internal consistency and contextability in the bylaw. And, you know, we'll go get it for you because it's a teamwork, you can't do it alone.
That's right.
The finance committee has to be involved, the Selectmen have to be involved, the attorneys have to be involved. We don't want to talk to them, the first thing they're going to do is pop it on the desk, like, what do you think we should do? That's your job. So, yeah, off you go.
So we'll keep refining this before town meeting. We may call on you individually to help us out at precinct meeting and at town meeting, but thanks for your comments.
I have one, one last comment about the financing of it. I wouldn't make a presentation where other towns did it for 35 and you want to add 20. I would go and say, for this town, we think it's going to cost $55,000.
What I shared with you...
Wouldn't break it down.
Yeah, I, I don't think we were saying that, and add another 20, what we said was, for other towns that we talked to, for the full five points, it was $55,000. For the first three, we found $35,000. I've got to talk that kind of language though with the town manager and the finance director in order to get a recommendation for this initially.
Won't they ask you, why did, why did those other towns do it for 35?
Somebody behind you.
You, you, you don't want, you don't want to be able to say, other towns did it for 35, but it's going to cost us 55.
No one has done it for 35, all five of them, Ralph. The point I was trying to make is all five of these, it's cost 55,000.
Okay, but, but, but then, then the subsequent question to that is, why didn't the other two, why didn't the other towns want four and five?
Well, because, yeah, I mean, we, we can talk about that, but, but we're not saying that others have done it for 35 and we need 55. Others have done it for 55, what's listed here.
Okay, well, I think you understand.
Do you still want to steal something?
Little history here, this, when I met with Julian about doing this, we have his full support. The problem is somehow this document, this request got over to Frank Duffy at Julian's request, who came up with this number of 25. So Julian is stuck on the number of 25, totally willing to go back for more money if it's needed later on, but I think we should go, you should try to go in, and I'll do what I can, although we're not supposed to be, you know, as a liaison...
Advocating.
Advocating for committees, but I think you need the full number up front. Why Mr. Duffy came up with this number, Ralph, that's why that number 25 is there. When, when the request went over, I think I had given a 55 plus was the number I asked Julian for to go and Frank cut it down to 25, so that's where that number's coming from. Town council...
Maybe he asked you for the difference.
But once we get him at town hall, we'll have 30,000 from rack, we can use that.
We're on the same page because I don't think it's, it's valuable with every town meeting and try to modify upwards in the law that's recommended. So we're going to try to get on the same page.
We want to go back to some of our money.
Well, thank you for, thanks to the ZDA for doing this because I think it's a long way to go.
I would have to say that a number of years ago when I discussed this with Brian, and it was, what, maybe eight, nine years ago, Brian quickened, dirty, said, that's going to cost at least 20, the town doesn't have it. Now, you can, can you tell me that eight or nine years ago, quick and dirty estimate of 20, which was probably low at the time because it wasn't really thought out as to what we'd be looking for, can translate to today's dollars in 25? I don't think so. I think really it'd be totally inadvisable.
There's a lot of technology that's happened in the last five.
Right, go to programs.
The programs, I mean, you can take this document and put it through and find out where, where it was copied from, what places, or you put through and where, where the conflicts.
Just a little history. This topic is not...
Yes.
Ray Taborz, the chairman of the planning board, asked in 19, Ray Taborz, in 1992, how much you think it's going to cost, Brian, to take this 1926, the framework is 1926.
It is.
See, the last major overhaul was in 1947. And since 1947, there have been thousands of amendments.
That's really good, that 1947 is really, that could, you can drive that home a little bit.
So basically, Brian, in 1979, all they did was change the numbering and rearrange a little bit.
No, the number got changed in 93 when we went to the code book.
The, in 1979, the town meeting voted on omnibus zoning bylaw changes, Article 101. And it took a lot of the information from the 47 bylaw, sort of consolidated it, changed, made the business districts as they are today, one, two, and three and whatnot, and added a lot of the grandfathering sections. That's the last major substantive change, but the framework of the bylaw is no different than its classic, including zoning, based on the 1926 bylaw, and the last major overhaul was in 1947.
And I think the towns paid a big price for the inadequate zoning bylaw, and that's what you've got to tell town meeting.
Thank you very much.
It really has.
Any other questions?
I want to thank you guys for pushing this through.
Thank you.
And the Board of Selectmen...
Yes.
For hoping to make this happen in an adequate amount of money.
Thank you, well, thanks to planning board for all they do.
And Brian for your presentation.
Thank you.
There's a finer question.
That's good.
Nothing else to come before this meeting, then I will declare a return. Thank you.